The Village of Lincoln Heights Committee Hall is now in session. Today's date is Monday, November 24th. The time is now 6:34, 6:33, I'm sorry, 6:33. Roll call, Ms. Randolph.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Okay, Councilwoman Nona Kahoumumia.
Present.
Councilman Dorance Daniels. No response. Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Present.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Present.
And welcome back, Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter.
Present.
All right. Mayor Rubika Kenzie Mumfree.
Present.
We have six who are present, one who is absent. We do have a quorum.
Okay, all right. Well, before I go into old business, I just want to welcome Vice Mayor Childs-Jeter back from her being out ill. And I know it's still recovering, but we want to thank God that you're able to come back to be amongst us.
Amen.
I am still recovering, and it will be a while, but I thought I'd better come see my council family.
All right.
So, thank you.
You're welcome, so welcome.
Continue with the prayers, please, send them on up.
All right, I think I'm gonna go ahead and do a prayer. Even though it's not an agenda, I think it's a worthy cause because you've backed amongst us, so I just thank God for Ms. Childs-Jeter to be amongst us, Lord. I thank you also for all the council members that are here today, that we may be able to make the right decisions to move the Village of Lincoln Heights forward. We want to thank any of our residents that are able to come today, and we want to thank the ones that had desire to come but were unable to. And bless the ones that are going through bereavement throughout the Village of Lincoln Heights, and all these blessings I ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
All right, is there any old business? Okay, all right, and so we have next, new business. Listed is a first reading of Resolution 25, 2025-92, establishing Memorial Day celebration. And the resolution information is in your packets. Is there any questions regarding that? I do know, since we didn't have a committee of the whole, I mean, regular council meetings, a lot of things are placed back on the agenda, so, from what, since we didn't have a quorum for that. So, that would be 92. Okay, no questions on that. Our next would be our supplemental agenda is ordinance, first reading of ordinance 2025-02, the temporary appropriation ordinance for the Village of Lincoln Heights. And that was sponsored by our manager Gaines Brown. Mr. Brown, did you want to elaborate on that at all?
So, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to make sure to submit this for this council meeting specifically, so that way there are three readings ahead of the turn of the calendar year. This temporary appropriations budget has been created in a way where we are able to forecast for the expenses for the first three months of 2026. Further budgetary deliberations will ensue in Q1 of 2026 in lieu of the permanent appropriations. So, this is a first look at this temporary appropriations, and I'm excited to hear you all's reactions, feedback, commentary associated with that.
So, this would be just a first reading. Is there any questions for Mr. Brown? I know I had to, took me a second to find mine, but, anything?
I do, I have a question, just, so, Mr. Brown, we will be able to go over this again in more detail at the finance meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay. Since we just really. Got it.
Okay, so this will be just a first reading.
But I do have another question, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and I never really fully understood it, but...
She can't hear you.
The opiate settlement fund. What can be done with those funds?
So, these funds can be leveraged in many different ways. This is something that I believe Commissioner Denise Dreehouse operates with, I believe she is the chair of the Addiction Response Coalition. These monies come from a settlement, and they have been dispersed to different municipalities all throughout Hamilton County. This could be used for various purposes, any type of programming, resources, services for the residents of Lincoln Heights that are currently dealing with or suffering from any type of substance abuse disorder. And I'm not entirely sure if there have been any programming that have been paid for previously, but that is something that we are interested in looking toward in 2026.
Okay, yeah, that, I'm just, because, I guess I'm trying to understand, this is something for residents, how do they know that if this can help pay for something, or can it be used for us to do a program that might address substance abuse? You know what I'm saying? I've never, it never was clear, and it was not, I don't think it was stated in the agreement or anything that we signed.
Well, it's nothing that council, Ms. Mitchell, it's nothing that council would agree to sign, it goes out to all the municipalities and...
Yeah, I know that, but I'm talking about the $14,000 that we have.
That would be...
So, how, how is that used?
Basically, it's used for, you give it to, if you have a organization in your municipality that deals with opiate addiction recovery and things like that. And so, if, I know last year, when Mr., we talked to Mr. Key, he mentioned about if the village didn't have that, then they would be able to make a decision to give it back to another municipality, or back to the county to disperse to another municipality that may have that type of organization in their community.
So, if the health center had a program as such, or something came up, is that something that we would partner with them, or it's just for municipalities?
I don't think so, because it has to be, it's designated to a specific organization that does deal with like, if they had something.
I know, that's what I'm saying. So, if the health center did that...
Do they do that?
What's the program that we...
They have to already have it established, not just come up with it, has to be already established, but I could, we could get more information on that.
Because we do have, I guess I can't quite remember what the agreement we have, the health center for that program that comes every, every month down there. Remember, we signed an agreement when Dr. Bowler and him came?
Right, but I just, I don't know if it's... I don't think it's geared to health clinics, though I think it's geared to a specific organization or nonprofit, that that's what their specialty is, is recovery.
Just that, not a particular program.
If my memory serves me right. But I can, because I am on that board, I'll have to get you more information on it.
Okay, please, please do, please do.
Anything else regarding the ordinance 02?
Um, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this property tax collection fee, fees, is that correct?
What page are you on?
On the, the first page on the back.
Oh, okay, on the back. It's just for the first three months.
That's not correct.
It's for the first three months. I think it's just for the first three months. Thank you. For the first three months of the year.
That couldn't be right.
Are you talking about 740?
740, yep.
Yes, this is, Madam, this is only for the first three months of the 2026 fiscal year, and this is the dollar amount associated with the settlement fees for property taxes.
For the first three months?
Yes, ma'am.
Eight thousand one hundred?
Yes, ma'am.
It don't seem like it should be correct, though. It seems like it should be more than that.
Okay. Is, is there any, go ahead?
So, are you saying that this is the money that we'll use for the first three months?
Yes, ma'am.
And, so how do you figure, I mean, how do they figure the tax will only be eight, little over $8,000 for three months? I mean, I just don't understand.
Well, this is front-loaded, this is the first half of the tax settlement fees. Okay, so this likely going to be upwards of $16,000 for the fiscal year of 2026, and as part of the temporary appropriations, Q1 through, I'm sorry, the first half of the year's generally tax season. So, having this money front-loaded within temporary appropriations is going to make sure that we have what we need in that season, so that way we can proceed with property tax collections.
This is a fee.
This is how much we pay to collect.
Oh, got you. No, this is, this is not the taxes themselves, the amount of revenue that will be brought in from these settlements, this is specifically the fee to collect.
Okay, that makes, that makes sense, because it makes sense another way.
For sure. My apologies for the confusion, but yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, anything else, anything else to inquire? Okay, all right, so this one is listed as a first reading, and due to more discussion will be in finance, is that my understanding?
Yes, so this will be something that will be discussed either in a finance committee or a regular council meeting. Not entirely sure what your preference is, but we will certainly walk through all the details associated with temporary appropriations in the respectful council or committee meetings.
Yeah, because I think that we'll have a finance meeting again before we have the council meeting, so, if you have that, or any other, anything else that comes up?
For sure.
Okay, all right. So, that's that one. Okay. The next supplemental agenda would be Resolution 93, authorizing a contract with GovPilot for asset management, business registration, landlord registration, reporting concerns, and work orders. Mr. Brown, you have the floor.
Yes, so this is, we weren't able to have a council meeting a couple of weeks ago, so wanted to make sure to bring this to you all for your review. This is for a one-year renewal for GovPilot for six modules. I understand that there has been some commentary about GovPilot and its use over the past three years, and one of the things that I want to make sure to mention is that this software is going to be very transformative as we look forward to enhancing code compliance, formalizing workflows associated with reports of concern, getting some additional information for permitting, for business permits and landlord registration. And I know that it was of interest for me to communicate with our account executive with GovPilot to see if we could get a discount, discounted rate associated with that. So, I did communicate with Ms. Courtney Camperine from GovPilot, and she mentioned that they are waiving the renewal costs, the renewal fees. So, typically, what will happen is there will be a 10% increase on renewal. They provide, initially, they provided us with 3%, so the contract would have been $20,600. And after having that conversation, she agreed that they can go no lower than $20,000, but they will be able to provide this software and this service specifically for our purposes, and some additional training associated with that, so that way we can leverage it to its fullest capacity for a year, initiated RFP for digital governance within that period, and determine whether this is the best pathway forward for our digital permitting, our code compliance, and various other purposes. They have an entire GovPilot catalog of modules that would be beneficial for our use. And one of the things that I think is of interest is to have our event permits listed there, our applications for zoning certificates on GovPilot, so that way we can somewhat, in some ways streamline what we are planning to do within the Village of Lincoln Heights. This will help make sure that we have ease of access for the residents and for businesses throughout the village, so that way they can access this information online. And they have been gracious to provide some marketing materials associated with that, training as it is needed, and this is something that we're really excited about. I know I mentioned that this is going to be used specifically for code compliance. I will make, I will make further updates associated with code compliance and the interview process associated with that, but for now, this is the renewal contract as it exists, and I wanted to make sure to give that to you all for your review.
So, any questions? Okay, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I would like to say, there's nothing wrong with the program, what was wrong was the people who didn't use it. So, you have to use the program in order to, to understand it and get what you need from it. I was one of the first people to be introduced to it, along with Mr. Key, Mr. Williams, and Manager Powell Drill at that time. So, I actually got a chance to look at what our office and click on some things, but if we don't use it, then it's not of any value to us, right? Well, we need to start using it.
Absolutely, and I don't want to keep beating a dead horse, but because of attrition, it has been difficult for anyone to really use it to its fullest capacity. And for our purposes within administration, I believe this is going to be very, very transformative in a proper public use of government funds, so that way we can in some ways augment our revenue through business permits and landlord registration, and subsequently code compliance. I'm not entirely sure what that may look like in terms of implications for mayor's courts, as folks may start receiving notices and violations for code compliance. But there was, there will certainly be opportunities in which we can leverage this software to its fullest capacity, so that way we're making the best and highest use of government funds.
We'll go back and forth, Mr. Daniels?
In the spirit of Vice Mayor, I guess, who would you recommend for training? You mentioned training. Who would you recommend participating in that training? And what do you, and how do you envision that process looking?
Absolutely, so that's a great question. For training, this is going to be something that is required for all staff that uses the system itself. So, for example, Ms. Dee Peterson, our tax administrator, will use GovPilot and its modules for business permits and landlord registration. You will find an example of what that looks like, that will be implemented, I'm sorry, not implemented, uploaded into GovPilot, so that way they'll be able to send out letters and do case management associated with the businesses that are not currently, not current on their permitting. And so, that is just an example of what is, what that would look like in terms of training. There will, there is also a GovPilot Academy to provide some refresher courses for those that need it. So, for example, a code compliance officer that comes in will likely be utilizing GovPilot Academy to train on the respective modules that are relevant to their purposes, so that way when they're ready, they can go out into the field and start using those, those modules immediately. Alternatively, I will say that there is also a mobile application for front-end for resident use, then also for back-end for staff use, and there will be training associated with that. Anybody that has Android or an iPhone will be able to download an app where they can effectively report a concern through their phone, and it can be something that is done anonymously, or they can submit their information, so that way they can receive follow-up. And from there, there will be a workflow in which there's like a drop-down menu in which, say, I wanted to report a concern on junk vehicles, I will be able to select that as a part of the report of concern, and that will be forwarded to the primary point of contact that is responsible for taking care of that specific concern.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yeah, just for clarification, so...
She can't hear you, Ms. Mitchell.
Just for clarification, after the 2026 contract expires, that $600 is going to be waived, or is it waived on this?
It's waived on this one.
This one, okay.
And as I mentioned earlier, there will have to be an RFP that goes out, so that way we can see if there are any other vendors that have similar services. But in terms of trying to get an RFP done right now, that would be, that would be doing a whole lot right now. But I will say that we want to leverage the software to its fullest capacity for a year, and determine if this is, you know, proper public use, if this is being used effectively, implemented effectively, so that way we can determine if we need to make a pivot towards something else in the future.
Well, we certainly thank you for asking for the discount.
Anyone else?
Just a follow-up on the, so, it sounds like from an engagement plan, it sounds like it'd be multiple engagements, not just with the staff, because it seems like you'll do like, maybe like an all-day staff thing, but also with the residents as well, too. So, are you saying like, you don't, you don't plan on there just being like this one initial rollout, just saying that this is here? It sounds like there'll be multiple engagement opportunities for not just staff, but residents as well, too, is that, is that what you're saying?
Absolutely, and there will be, there'll be frequently asked questions, documents listed on the website, so that way if there's any concern, any confusion on what to do with GovPilot on the website or through the mobile application, there will be documentation that can point people to the right direction, and there's technical support to that effect as well. So, training will be initiated for staff, and there will be materials for residents to access through the website. We can have printed copies here as well, but that is something that I believe will be helpful. They also have marketing materials to, in some ways, I wouldn't say garner some excitement, but to demonstrate that this, this software exists for the village, and this is how you can use it, so...
You said they do?
Yes, they have that.
Also, council can go in and look and see what's going on at any time. They can also keep an eye on things that have been asked to repair, if it's a pothole, and we need to know what's going on. In addition to him giving a report, we can go in there and look and see if it's actually been done. I assume that's still the way it works.
Yes, ma'am, and I'm glad that you mentioned that, because I completely failed to mention that this will also be used for reporting to council and the committees of interest, so we'll be able to pull up reports on what exactly has been resolved through GovPilot, so that way we can determine, you know, areas of interest, we can get statistics associated with that, some data visualizations, and I believe that this is going to be something that's going to be very transformative for our purposes, because of the data-driven decision-making that is going to be derived from GovPilot.
And you will also have information, or you will have, yeah, information that you can also, when there's a grant that come along?
Yes.
It's ready to, to use it. I, I like the program.
Anyone else got a question? All right, so we'll move on. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown, for that breakdown. Okay, our next resolution would be to the auditor regarding drawdown of property tax. Mr. Brown? Which, this is what we do every year, this time of year?
Yes, that is my understanding. Mr. Desai shared this information with me to present this to council. This is what is going to help the village gather some revenue associated with property taxes, and this will effectively help us with, yeah, the general welfare and any type of emergency expenses for the village as we are drawing down property taxes for any expenditures that the village may incur.
Also listed for the, for the residents that are watching, we're on our first where it says, the county auditor shall pay to the accounts of the local authorities any money that may be in the county treasure regarding funds derived from taxes or other sources which are payable by law to the county treasure upon receiving a resolution from such local authority making said request.
Is your money coming to you early?
So, that's the reason for the drawdown. Okay, any questions? All right, there are no questions. Our next resolution is supporting the Ohio Commissions for United States Semi-Quenchial American 25 Ohio.
Yeah, so this resolution is associated with something that came across my desk from the Center for Local Government. Mr. Zaya Hewitt forwarded this to us, so that way we can present legislation to council and become an America 250 Ohio community. This is a unique opportunity in which we will be able to establish or identify a liaison that will attend the America 250 Ohio meetings. We will also be privy to certain grant opportunities, and that, that last part is something that I think is really timely and relevant for our purposes, so that way we can leverage those grant monies towards whatever project that we can use those monies towards. And it also provides some, some marketing materials associated with rolling this out. I know that the Village of Lincoln Heights will be celebrating 80 years of incorporation next year, and having this alongside that, that celebration itself will be helpful, so that way we can have some additional grant opportunities and also be recognized within America 250's Ohio community list.
Any questions?
So, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I get information on America 250, and I think the only other communities other than Cincinnati, I think, and Green Hills, those are two that I, I've seen on the list. So, Ohio's first, that means they're doing something in January. So, we need to see if there's a way that we can be designated in that month as a first.
Absolutely, we can, we can certainly make that, make that notice clear to the Center for Local Government as we submit these materials. I don't want to be presumptuous in thinking that this is going to be approved, but I wanted to at least make sure that this was presented to you all for review and a vote for passage. And the fact that we are, the Village of Lincoln Heights is the first self-governing black municipality within the United States above the Mason-Dixon line, I think that it's important that we are also recognizing that, and having that communicated through America 250 Ohio's marketing purposes.
Absolutely. Okay, all right. Any questions? Anymore? Okay, all right. Next would be miscellaneous business. Is there any miscellaneous business?
I guess that should be the proper time before, just to make sure nobody else, but I would like to go into executive session during this committee of the hall at 6:30, so if there is no miscellaneous business, I'll make my motion. So, I just want to leave the floor open, just to make sure nobody else had nothing else. I would like to go in executive, executive session to discuss the employment of a public employee, and I also would like to invite our village manager as well.
Second.
It's the move-in second, roll call.
Give me one second, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoumumia.
Yes.
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie-Mumphrey.
Yes.
We have seven I-votes, and that motion does pass. Seven oh, is that right? Seven oh, eight?
Use it on, use it on.
Seven oh-three. I'm sorry.
Seven three. And just make sure we include that the village manager isn't, isn't to be-
Invited, yes, ma'am.
I guess, I don't know.
The Village of Lincoln Heights Council is now back in session. Today's date, November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. The time is now seven twenty, seven twenty-four. Roll call, Ms. Randolph?
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Kahoumumia.
Present.
Councilwoman, um, Tanya Key.
Present.
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Present.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Present.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter.
Present.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie-Mumphrey.
Present.
We have seven who are present. We do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any other miscellaneous business?
Last thing, just looking at the agenda for the next one, because I don't, I don't think, before we can have to make a motion, um, per our calendar, is it not that hearing from the residents should be like, right after like announcement, something like that? I just, before we even doing it, uh, have to make a motion. Can't we just, just redo this agenda for the next meeting and just move hearing from the residents up to where it is in our, uh, calendar, per our charter?
In the-
Did you guys say something?
Yes, I think that was done, done during the time that I was, uh, running the meetings, and, uh, in the, in the charter, if you look in there.
Rules of council, not the charter.
I mean, sorry, rules of council. There is nothing in there that says residents. That's something that we put in.
There's nothing in there that's in front of our calendar? Okay.
But you can, uh, you can make a charter put where you want to. I'm just telling you what happened then. And that was because we need to take care of business with everything else that was going on in here. Uh, we needed to make sure we got things passed for the, uh, village, and then residents speak.
It just, well, in that same spirit, I think taking care of business, hearing from the residents should be what sets the tone for us to take care of business, but that's just my opinion.
That's, that's great, Ms. Daniels.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion for adjournment of committee of the whole?
Some of.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We start back up, looks like in five minutes.